Well, good afternoon, everybody. The today is Thursday, July 3rd. It is 1:09. And this is a meeting of the General Government Subcommittee of the City Council. Calling the meeting to order at 1:09. Today on the agenda, we have. Is everyone hearing me okay? Yep, okay. To the end of the agenda, we have three items. Two of them were referred by the City Council the last meeting. It's regarding amended Chapter 1, Article 5, Section 1 through 25, the revised ordinance of Springfield. And the other one is amended Article 2, Section 2.2, of the zoning ordinance of the city of Springfield as amended. Here, we are joined in chamber by the City Council of Timon Island. We're also joined by Tim Sheen for the Economic Development. Thank you, team, for joining us. Attorney Tom Moore. Thank you for joining us, sir, for your pre-putation procedure. And then we have remotely held Commissioner Haley Stotl Harris. Good afternoon, Commissioner. And we have from SPD ladies and Sue Haley R C. Good afternoon, Ms. R C. We have Councilor Maria Perez. Thank you for joining us, Councilor Perez. And then we have Steve Desilets from the Code Enforcement Office. Thank you, gentlemen. Steve, who's joining us? Who are those two gentlemen joining you?
Parkman. Oh, we got something. Go ahead.
No, if you could. Okay, you say it again?
Michael from the Zoning Department.
Hi, Michael. And then to your right, who's home?
Keith O'Connor.
Hi, Keith. How are you? Good to see you guys. Can't barely see you from here. But all right, so why don't we just turn it over to Tim? Tim's gonna give us a quick description of what he's proposing and so forth.
Sure. So ultimately, what's happening here is that zoning code enforcement is moving over to the Office of Planning and Economic Development. And the purpose for that is to have more coordination between the Planning Department and the neighborhoods with regards to code enforcement.
Residential code enforcement?
Yes, residential, commercial.
Okay.
It's related to the underlying zoning and zoning compliance. So 99.9% of the work that's going through the zoning board of appeals and the zoning code is directly related to planning work. So it makes sense to have integration of the code enforcement aspects into OPED, so that, you know, there's better communication about what's happening, both from an enforcement standpoint and things that are coming forward in terms of new projects. And one of the other things is that we wanted to have more coordination between zoning code enforcement and the neighborhood councils and getting information back in from the neighborhood councils to the zoning code enforcement people. But quite frankly, what a lot of this is, is a cleanup that should have been done relative to the ordinances that you're looking at when the Control Board ultimately exited Springfield. All of the code enforcement issues ultimately come under what is the Director of Community Development, the legislative language. But that is the Chief Development Officer, which would be me. Tim, do you want to elaborate on the?
I think, yeah, I think you said it right. It's a housekeeping measure of sorts, what we're doing with the ordinances to match up to what the special act was. It was a chapter 468 of the Acts of 2008. It was Control Board action they did. And essentially reorganized a number of things in the city, one of which is exactly like the CDO just said. It created, you know, the Community Development Office. And under the umbrella, it added anything you can think of in economic development planning, one of which is code enforcement. So our current ordinances don't really recognize that the CDO has authority, even though the CDO does under that act. So it really is to catch our ordinances up to make them consistent with this special act.
Okay. So in summary, you guys are talking about Article 2, right?
It's both, it's both the change to the fee table ordinance, which is Chapter 1, Section 1 dash 25, and then the change to the zoning ordinance, which is to the definition section to recognize what the legislature wanted.
Okay. So in layman's terms. So I'm reading here Article, Chapter 1, Article 5, Section 1 through 25.
Right.
But it talks about any violation of any point of supervision. So the zoning ordinance of the city of Springfield. It goes on, then it talks about penalty of $50 or otherwise explicitly provided within the zoning law.
Yeah, right. So it's, it's, the, the language there is all the same. The only added language is the reference to the Chief Development Officer as the Director of Community Development.
Oh, I see.
That's the addition that we made. And it was because if, if an enforcement is needed on the zoning ordinance, like Tim said, our ordinance doesn't recognize that the CDO, it could come from that office, even though Tim's not writing the ticket, of course. He's had supervision and authority. He has supervision and authority over that department. So it really is a kind of housekeeping measure in case someone tries to appeal and say, well, he didn't have authority under the city's ordinance.
Well, let me read it out so people understand at home. It says, this, the code enforcement, it says, these zoning ordinances may be enforced by Commissioner of Code Enforcement, any Assistant Commissioner of Court Enforcement, Building Inspectors, Housing Inspectors, the zoning administrator or the Director of Community Development, also known as the Chief Development Officer, or he's for her this. All right.
And in reality, nothing is really changing in terms of when the zoning code enforcement is in the building department. Mike Jacob is Steve's designee. When he comes over, when the, the team comes over to OPED, Mike Jacob will be my designee.
Right. So in terms of, I guess, the pyramid, so they're gonna fall under you.
They already do.
They already do.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. That's what I'm saying. It already happened in 2008, but we've, the ordinances have never been adjusted. So that's what Tim said. It's sort of, it's a housekeeping measure.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand. Okay. You know, one thing that was surprising about city government is that this city is not a large city, it's a medium city, but yet the government is big enough to confuse the heck out of you.
That time, and at that time, like, like Tim's referring to, that time specifically, you're right, Counselor, it was the end of the Control Board era. They had sort of done all this stuff, but this is one of several acts they passed near the end.
Okay. So, so do we might do this, and there's no budgetary transfer that we need to do?
No, the budget's already been transferred. We, we had this discussion about this change during the budget hearings. And it was explained that, you know, the, the administrative budget for zoning code enforcement was gonna be transferred over to OPED.
Okay, excellent. All right, any questions?
Mr. Chair, through the chair, may I just ask?
Can I, can I, Commissioner, give me a quick second? I believe, Counselor.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just a quick second. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine. I, I just, I, I always thought there was a little bit of a wall between planning and zoning. And it sounds like this is, if there was, this is taking care of that. Isn't it both under you now?
They've always been, since the Control Board left, they've been under that.
They've been under that, okay. All right, great. No, I'm all set. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Colton?
From a, thank you very much again. I may have missed this, but from a table of organizational perspective, what does this mean? So I hear that, Tim, she, the Chief Development, I'm sorry, what do you see what?
Chief Development Officer.
Ah, the Chief Development Officer. So does that mean that Steve Desilets falls under him as a management structure? I'm just trying to envision this in my head as far as structure is concerned.
Tim?
Well, the, the department does fall under the position, yes.
That was my question. So Steve Desilets, as the Commissioner of Code Enforcement, now reports directly to you. Is that correct?
All, all aspects of code enforcement are under the position and have been under the position since the Control Board left.
But have not been operationalized, is that correct?
No, this, this is actually in terms of cleaning up language in the, the ordinance. But they have been ultimately, under the, the, the reporting structure is ultimately Steve to me.
Okay. And so my only question, I understand, but is it now being operationalized? I hear you saying it's always been that way. But in fact, from a department head perspective, I have not experienced it that way. So you're saying that this has always been since 2008, the structure?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the only thing that's really changing, Helen, right now is that the staff for zoning code enforcement is physically moving from where they are in the, the building department over to the Office of Planning and Economic Development. So they're located in that office now.
So it's a, it's a demographic change. I mean, it's a geographic change.
Yes.
But the, the way in which we interact with zoning code enforcement will not change as department heads, is that correct?
Absolutely not, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and just, you know, just so, I, I probably should have read this before. When the code, when the Control Board passed the act they passed, they created the Department of Community Development. But then they defined that as its housing, its existing community development department, including housing, neighborhood economic development departments, code enforcement department, planning department, and staffing for redevelopment authority and industrial development financing authority. So it includes the Planning Board, zoning board of appeals, Conservation Commission, Historic Commission, are all under the administrative control of the Director of Community Development. So that's sort of, that's as the pyramid goes, that's how it works.
I think that's the, the point that Helen is bringing up. It's, it's basically administrative, oh, the position has administrative oversight of those departments.
Right.
I certainly understand that because I, that's how I, I have a cabinet, right? Because of that, of, of legislation that the Control Board passed. So I understand that. I just did not understand all of those departments were a part of that ordinance. So thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner Colton. I would like to recognize Counselor Brian Santinello, who has just joined us. Good afternoon, Counselor Santinello. All right. So, Counselor Perez, do you have any questions? You mean, Counselor Perez?
Not at this one, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else, any comments, questions, concerns? No? Okay. All right. So I believe this is gonna be going out to the chambers on the 14th, which is next, two weeks, right? Two weeks from now?
Yes.
I'm sure you're gonna be there, Tim, to give us.
I definitely will be.
A mention to the, the chambers.
That's another thing. I, I should apologize to the council members for not being there when this originally came up. We weren't aware that it was on the agenda, and that's why no one was there. So.
Yeah, that's fine.
But we'll definitely be there for the 14th.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, so, Tim, just to, Counselor Allen, we need to form a recommendation to, favorable recommendation on this?
Make a motion that we bring Item 1, Chapter 1, that we just discussed, forward to the City Council.
And Item 2 as well.
And Item 2.
Item 2, yeah.
They both put together.
Very well. So I second that, only favors aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So we're gonna be bringing it up to.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. So moving on to the next item on the agenda, there's one thing that I want to discuss and specifically ask Counselor Allen to, to chime in. And this is discussion on unpaid code enforcement ordinance. Particularly as it relates to the Dollar Tree on Island Island Road. Over the weekend, I got some complaints and there's some pictures being circulated on Facebook. And I don't know if you guys can see them, but this is what is being circulated on Facebook. You have see here some guys. I'm assuming they're illegally dumping there. They have mattresses, they have, you name it, all big items. And look at this. This is the back. Absolutely, and it's kind of hard to see, absolutely ludicrous. You got tires, you got mattresses, you got water jugs, milk jugs, diapers, you name it. This is a health issue. It actually appears that we also have blankets, all kinds of stuff. Anyways. I am not impressed at all with what I see. And those are some of the pictures that are going around. And so I wanted to start having a discussion because I think this fits in more into the, fit nicely into the unpaid ordinance. Madame, I will be contacting the Madame Clerk, so you all have to get an accurate accounting of the ordinance tickets that they've been given and how much they have outstanding. So, Counselor Allen, do you wanna give?
Yeah, I think Keith, if I'm not mistaken, you know, Keith sent me a summary of, of the Dollar Tree ticket situation, et cetera.
Okay.
Two or three days ago, maybe the end of last week. I don't know, Keith, if you could mention that, where, where we are with them, because I know you're on a weekly ticketing thing.
Yeah, yes. So the Dollar Tree, they definitely have not come into compliance under the guidelines that we set forth. We have been ticketing them and we have them basically on a weekly type of inspection. I went to the Dollar Tree myself today because I know this is gonna be something we're gonna discuss. I went there today, talked to the manager there, inquired about the, the district manager who I spoke to before previously. And now this district manager, she states, is fired. There's no district manager. The store manager who I spoke to has 101 different excuses why this litter is not being picked up over there. Right now, they have no district managers. She said that they're trying to figure out something in regards to the corporate. One of the things I told her is, you know, the city right now, we are actively gonna be taken every time we go there. Place is a mess, which today's outrageous there. It's $200, $200 a ticket that we're gonna be giving out, and it can go up. Our tickets range from $10 up to $500 there. So she's on notice personally for me, that store manager. Again, I talked to the district manager previously. One of the things, what you mentioned, I didn't see any bed mattresses or anything like that, any bulk or tires when I was there today. But there still is a lot of scattered trash all around the property, rotten leaves. It, it appeared maybe a landscaper maybe cutting the lawn, that's really about it. Inside, I, when I went inside, the floors looked a little dirty there. They definitely need to do some house keeping over there. As far as the tickets, it, it appears that they have at least $250 worth of tickets that, that are not been paid thus far.
Keith, can you tell us how much total have they been ticketed, dollar value? Just, just this year, just like you asked me? And if you have it from last year?
So I, the only figure that I have, it would be, you know, from code enforcement. And we had ticketed, that is, $250 worth of tickets there. There's one ticket that was written, there was something wrong, how the, it, it got, it got voided out, a $50 ticket previously at the very, very beginning. That something was written wrong in regards to it there. So so far on our end, $250. I know the ordinance officers, they have multiple tickets that was written to their property.
Right. So Steve, I just want to make sure, I want to make sure. First of all, pretty annoyed with this. As is Counselor Allen, it's in between, it's right smack in between his district, Ward 7, and my district, Ward 6. It's technically Ward 7, but it, we, we happily work it everywhere.
Right between, I mean, you're, the street across the street is Ward 6.
Yeah. And so I want to make sure that I understand, Steve. Are you saying that in 2025, we have given them $250 worth of tickets so far?
No, more than that. Look at, what's, what's your ordinance in zoning altogether?
Well, I, I had sent Tim an email breaking down the police department tickets since they opened up. And I want to say that number was north of 3,000. And I also thought I had a zoning numbers on there for tickets.
It could be, Sue Haley, good afternoon. Can you chime in on that? Do you have that info for us? Ms. R C?
Unfortunately, I do not have that information right now available. The statute is at his desk. But as soon as he arrives, I'd be more than happy to obtain it. But I agree with Mike with, I do remember the number being upwards to $3,000 for that particular location.
Since, since they opened, correct?
Correct.
And when did they open? If anybody knows. Is it eight years or 10 years?
Oh, no, it was, it was at least 10 years. We, we were having meetings on them in 2013. I remember a civic association meeting in 2013. I distinctly remember that meeting because I had had surgery right before that meeting. That's how I can remember it. And I would say within two years, if not one year, it opened. That, that meeting was in the summer of 13. I'd say it was opened by 14.
So they've been open at least eight years at a minimum.
10.
10, okay. Very well. Ms. R C, if you could be so kind, please, could you send that information to all councils, please? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have, I'm looking at my phone. But any, any information like that, Mike, if you sent that to me, I'm not finding it here. I found an email from you, but it didn't have that. But any rate, I think we should get all that stuff around then.
Absolutely. And so now, I believe, Keith, I believe you might have said that, that $3,000 in SPD tickets. Is there tickets that you guys have given out? That, that's the $250 that you're talking about? From code enforcement?
$250 is from code enforcement. Our houses is in there.
In 2025?
Yeah, which, which we ticket under the city ordinance. We, when it comes to a commercial property, we can all ticket under city ordinance. We can't use the state sanitary code. So the zoning department, they would definitely ticket under dumping that they have under the zoning. And of course.
Go ahead.
Now, I was just gonna say, and then, of course, the ordinance officers, they would ticket under the city ordinance.
Understood. Now, would you be able to tell me in 2024, what you guys have done with the Dollar Tree? In terms of ticketing?
Probably.
For the code enforcement, if anything?
Well, probably 2024, 2023, 2022, probably next to nothing. As you counselors know, we had went back to council after we got approved from the mayor to get raises for the clerks because we had no capacity in our office.
Yeah.
So it's quite a few years in a row, our ability to issue tickets throughout the city other than emergency was gone. If you look at this year comparatively, after getting the raises for the clerks and they have a stable workforce in here now, we've issued over $500,000 in tickets in 2025. So my conversation with Tim at the last meeting is, looking at this and looking at this case, we've taken it where the inspectors had a 30-day cycle on it. We moved it to a weekly cycle. So at this point, they're getting ticket, they should be getting tickets weekly every time we go out there on a week. Unless it's cleaned up, we go out there, it's cleaned up. Other than that, they should be getting a ticket from housing. Not only from housing, zoning's out there and leases out there. So they're get, they can get hit three different ways on being ticketed now.
Right. But I'm getting the funny impression, though, for them, it's cheaper to pay the tickets than to do what they're supposed to. Although I'm hoping that at some point, somebody in corporate and the corporate office will kind of question and raise what the hell's going on here. But that could take a while. With that being said, I did have a conversation with Planning. That place, and correct me, Counselor Allen, with this, but there's, there's Zone A, which means that they didn't, they didn't need a special permit. And so they have the right to operate. However, we did not have the right to make all neighborhoods pretty crappy and dangerous. Now, with that being said, and this is more, I guess, of a love question. Because initially, my thought was, let's just look at the permits. And to be honest with you, based upon what I'm seeing here, just this right now, honestly, I'm willing to shut them down if I could right now. I really, I would shut them down right now. This is not, there's no way, holy hell, there's no way in holy heck. That this is susceptible, and we all know that. Now, Tom, if, if we could, what are your thoughts in terms of real teeth that we can sink into this, aside from ticket? Because I'm getting the funny feeling that it's just business as usual for them with these tickets. Because this has been going on for eight years now. I mean.
Well, there were some years that weren't as bad. It, it was bad for a while at the beginning, and it got, it got better. I don't know how much better it got, but I wasn't getting complaints. But this last few months is, it gone down, way downhill.
Yeah, okay.
And, and actually, this picture, obviously, one of these pictures, Dollar Tree stores in the background, you can see the sign. This other picture, I don't know where this is. I presumably it's on that property, but.
Yeah, that's in the corner.
I've never seen anything quite as bad as this.
Yeah.
And not to defend them, but I have to check that. But, but what are, what can we do?
Yeah, what are our options?
Can we have a situation where if there's any outstanding tickets that are unpaid, they, they can't operate or is, what?
Well, I mean, so we, I think we discussed last time, counselors, about the kind of licensure and permitting aspect of enforcement. And, you know, we discussed that the, a business like the Dollar Tree is not coming in for a building permit or, or a liquor license. So, you know, the, the mechanism to try to, you know, use that as a tool for this particular business doesn't seem like it would be very effective. I think, you know, doing some research into some other communities and how they've dealt with different issues with illegal dumping or littering, you know, a couple of examples I found were, were, you know, communities going to the, the kind of special act, Home Rule Power type of authority, going to the state to ask for an expansion on, say, like, the, the value of the penalty. You know, as we discussed last time, there's a certain cap that we can issue for, for ordinance violations, and that's regulated by the state. So we don't have the authority internally to increase those violations. So the, the council could consider, you know, putting forth a measure that would have to go to the state to get approved, but would allow Springfield to issue something with more teeth than the current penalties allow.
Because right now, it's up to $200, I think.
Yeah, I think, I, I think, and, and the, the, the non-criminal disposition amount for the state is regulated at 300. And then, you know, again, unless there's a special law passed that says something specific to a community, otherwise. So that was one avenue that I thought, you know, would be potential for the council to investigate. I think last time we discussed the potential for publication of people who are, have outstanding tickets or repeat offenders with large amounts of tickets. That issue's a little complicated as far as how and when we're able to publish certain things. I did see that communities had done, you know, like Boston has a publication list of outstanding code violations, but it doesn't have people's names and addresses or anything like that. It really just says a, a property location and then a code for what would, I found represented a number of violations, you know, within the, the cited code, say, the sanitary code or the building code. So it wouldn't have been an apples to apples to what we're proposing. And, you know, the city of Worcester and Springfield, as you, as you gentlemen know, we often do public campaigns, you know, not for lack of a better word, like a shaming type of thing when there's a massive illegal dumper caught on video. You know, Worcester's done kind of promotional things with that, and we have too. But from what we're describing, the closest thing I could find was something that was done in the South. It was done in Mississippi where they passed, again, a special act that allowed them to take a list of people who have not paid municipal fines or fees like littering and then publish them on the city. And then publish them on the city's website or in the newspaper as well. And they had some requirements that went with that, as you might expect, there has to sort of be um a due process element to it where you have to have a chance to go through the adjudication. But if it's a finalized thing and there was no appeal taken and the ticket is outstanding, then that, you know, my understanding of the law they passed was that they could do what we're looking to do. So that's another avenue that the the council might look to investigate is say, you know, we wanna give ourselves the actual legal authority to do this on a regular basis. Um and again, there'd be some checks and balances in the process where we wouldn't allow it to just be an issue, issue a ticket and then somebody's name could pop up a month later. There would have to be really procedures to make sure there was no, you know, discrimination in the issuance or the publication, that it was accurate and timely. Because, you know, if somebody pays and then it publishes a day later, you have a problem.
Right.
Um there's a number of procedural concerns, like you, you're probably thinking of a number as well, you know, and I made a list of what. You would have to probably deal with operationally if we were to go that route. But that was another avenue that was potentially worth investing in. I don't know, counselor, to answer your question full. I don't know that either of those methods gives the sufficient teeth that I think the council some, you know, would be looking for for a business that's so out of compliant as, you know.
But it's gotta be something that can be done. I hear what you're saying, uh uh councillor, uh attorney, but we can't be hijacked by these knuckleheads. That's ludicrous. I mean, I'm pretty ticked off with this. It's like, a- and I know we're bound by law, what have you, but we gotta be creative. We gotta be creative. We can't be hijacked by these people, for God's sakes.
Hello?
Um uh uh yes, I can still tell in a second. So uh so to be clear, I hear what you're saying, so. Right now, you cannot find the tool right now in the toolbox, as we say.
I think we have the maximum penalties we're allowed and and I, from what I understand from the reports, that's what we've been doing and we're gonna continue to do. Um you know, as far as like like a criminal uh element to to dumping, you know, I don't really, I couldn't speak to that right now. I'd have to really look at at the criminal side of it. It's not something I practice, you know, I I do civil law, so I can't really speak to that part of it, but I'd be happy to look into it and kind of report back if there's a. A way to pursue something in in that vein as opposed to just giving civil citations for it, you know?
Yeah, uh Councilor Allen, I thank you, Attorney. Uh I can't recall right now, but do you feel they have sufficient lighting at nighttime there? Because I I say drive by sometimes, I feel like it's a little dark. I I haven't really paid full attention to the back and.
I had to look, I had to look again. It's really not bright, but.
Because in order to do something like this, I mean, this is daytime, of course, which concerns me that people are the the blunt to do it during daytime, so. Uh uh I'm just trying to think of all the angles here uh that we can. I see how a couple of hands up. I do believe that Councilor Santinello had questions, so well, and Councilor Stell, Councilor Perez, and then Ms. RC, Councilor Santinello?
Yeah, a- as we spoke this morning, um. Don't these businesses need a common vic license?
Hmm, attorney?
I I I'm, this is a retail business, so they'd have to have, you know, licensure to conduct a business. I think that's a common vic.
Yep, and and also if if a business doesn't pay their taxes, if they owe taxes, isn't that grounds to not give them that? Or renew that until the taxes are paid?
Yeah, I'd have to see, I'd have to see if the common victory license was part of that. Um but they do, they would, if they didn't pay taxes, they'd be part of the same list that was given to all departments, so they would be on the list of people who owed fees to the city. So they should, they would have, if anybody has to pay taxes, they would definitely be on that list.
Because I know if a restaurant or a bar, they got a liquor license, if there's a fight in the bar, if they're serving minors, whatever. They have to go before the license commission and then they can met out penalties. So I don't know why we don't have some kind of a board that these businesses have to come before if they're violators. And then and then we can bet out uh the penalties.
You're saying, pardon me, uh all right, if I go?
Yeah.
Yeah, um so you're saying, Brian, that um. A licensing commission, if there's alcohol involved, that there is a process for. Uh discipline kind of thing, but in this situation.
Sure, any anytime there's a violation, you serve a minor, uh somebody's drunk, there's a fight in your bar. Then you're subject to go to before the license commission and they can penalize. I can't see why we can't do this for businesses that aren't paying these fines. For these, these are major violations. I mean, th- this is disgusting to look at. We all know that and and they and they don't care. They're not even paying it.
Before before we move on, uh attorney, more uh more, uh I would love to hear your five second uh first impression on that.
Yeah, I know the board of licensed commissioners regularly, like, counselor's correct, they regularly deal with violations of alcohol licensure terms. And if you don't pay your fees and your your taxes to the city, you can have your license suspended. You know, and not renewed essentially at the end of the year. And we've had recent dealings with that issue, so that is very true. As far as the enforcement and regulation of licenses for common victualer, I'd have to look into that part of it. I really, really don't know off the top of my head how that's enforced. I don't know if the license, the board of licensed commissioners is the is the board that does that. I mean, they may be, but I'd have to look into it to.
Of which commission, which board?
The board of licensed commissioners, which is the one that deals with like the example for for alcohol. Um I'm not, I don't know that they deal with that. Maybe they they might do that. I don't, you know, I'm not sure off the top of my head, I have to.
I was just using the board of licensed commissioners as an example that bar owners that have licenses have to go before them. They're a regulatory body, but we have no teeth as far as people just ignoring. Uh 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 you know, a regular business ignoring these fines.
Hmm hmm. So uh attorney Moore, I wonder if uh just following the same vein of Councilor Santinello. If this was to move forward or there's some sort of opportunity to do something like this, uh because he did catch my attention with that suggestion. Would that be the creation of, I don't want to say a department, but of a whole different board or would that come under the purview of council?
Yeah, I don't know that it would be necessary. I I'd have to look into again how you enforce common victory licenses, how they are renewed. You know, what had, who has jurisdiction over that now? I I have to look into it to be sure that I understood it well enough. It may well be that there's an existing board that has jurisdiction, or it may well be that there is no jurisdiction over that, and that's not the sort of license of permitting we hold.
Right.
You know, I don't, I don't have an answer to that right now, but I'd certainly be happy to look at, look into it if you guys.
Got you. Do you have?
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank, thanks, Counselor Santinello. Uh yeah, Tom, um Helen was on this call before. I don't think she's on it now, but does she have a process? They're they inspect all the restaurants and all the food prep up.
Department would would inspect it for a license for the food service, yeah, sure.
So would that be potentially an expansion of whatever she has now? Um to see if it's, because this is kind of unhealthy. I mean, it's, we're not talking about.
Yeah, so I think in terms of if if it was a a business, it was a restaurant that had a similar littering issue or trash issue, say, is the one we're talking about. And they didn't pay their fines and they became these outstanding fees and fines, then. I think it's, yeah, it's my understanding that that when the license for the food, you know, service would come up, that that would be something could be withheld because they owed money to the city. It can be no different than the tax issue at that point. One thing to remember about these types of fines is if the business pays them. Then there is no suspensions of licenses like that. It's essentially they paid their debt and it's the next ticket and the next ticket and the next ticket. It would have to become like a certified, like the list gets certified through the collector's offices, a process they do every year. So it would have to be a period of time that would pass, and then that list gets certified to all the departments, including the licensing board and health department and and building departments. For whoever might issue things that would need to be aware of it.
Right.
So theoretically, it could be, I I think, used for what we're talking about for like a litter violation that wasn't paid over time for a restaurant. I think you would absolutely have that as an outstanding fee that would make it so that you wouldn't be able to renew licenses either for alcohol or for for their food.
I come and pick.
Yeah, right. And I see, so and yeah, the convicts, you know, it's it's like a retail license, right? So I'd have to, I have to look into that. I'm, I don't, you know, I I should know better, but honestly, I. Spent a long time.
Well, you know better than us.
It's been a long time since I looked at that particular one. I don't, I don't know, and I don't wanna say something that's inaccurate, so I'll just say I'll have to, I'll have to read into it.
Uh before we move on, and uh now I see everybody has a hands up, but uh attorney, I would love to hear your your follow up on that, uh because I I. Uh this is uh my radar.
Yeah, I will, I will do some research for the committee.
Thank you. Uh so uh Commissioner Carlton, welcome back.
Uh Mr. Chair.
Yes, uh actually, it's gonna be Councilor Perez followed by Ms. RC, Councilor Perez.
Yeah, so you know what, first and most of all, the coenforcement, I give them things. But I see and 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 I always question the many uh offenders that we have in the city. And not knowing much about the department, if they have the enough staff. Um that can comply with all this uh test. Um that's one question, if yes or no, and if it's yes, fine, but we still have to look. Because I've seen so many offenses going in the city. One of the. That I'm I'm here today is because um if you do a violation when it comes to uh to. About only to write a ticket, what's going on that the person pay?
Are you muted, Councilor Perez?
Oh, yeah, I am, well, actually.
Yeah.
Pay or less that we have the what is called the repeater's offenders. I have, I will say right now that I'm dealing and I'm gonna meet with a family. And this is from the zoning department, probably I'm gonna get ahold of them. That they pay, they pay whatever um 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 ticket they have to pay, but they continue. Doing the same over and over and impacting the neighborhood, we're not saying what neighborhood it is. So I, it's like a revolving door because then they paid the ticket, but they back where they were. So I would like and thank you for having this meeting, uh Mr. Chair. Because there's a lot of questions when it comes to all this, it's not only one question, but repeater offenders, not only in business. But we come to the part of the Sony when people are like. And I I just don't want, because I'm not in part of the investigation, um not violating Sony. And doing um business in their own home and it's been recognized. And if they get a ticket, fine, they'd rather pay that ticket and continue with the business. So I think it's a very complex issue right now that I think, thank you for having this meeting, that it from my sense and viewpoint. In the learning aspect, we need to continue with type of meetings like this one so we could understand the dynamic of each department and what role each department's played. And thank you for having this meeting, Mr. Chair.
Councilor Perez, uh thank you for your share. And it's also my intention to continue to talk about uh unpaid ordinance tickets and everything that relates to it. Because it's it's really not only affecting us in terms of money, as we know, there's approximately one million dollars of uncollected money of their unpaid tickets. And in time in which the city needs money, one, that's not acceptable to me. Two, the impact of which you this discuss uh to the neighborhood and to the environment, uh it's just not a good situation for all, and we need to. We need to close this loophole pronto, very pronto. Uh thank you, Councilor Perez. Uh yes, Commissioner, give me a quick second if I may. Uh counsel, um my apologies. Ms. RC followed by uh Commissioner Carlton.
Yes, I just wanted to provide you those numbers that you were looking for.
Yeah.
Affirmations of the the dollar amounts. And what we've been paid and what hasn't. Um is it an okay time to share that right now?
Yeah.
All right, so altogether, um there is a balance of three thousand and fifty dollars. And there have been thirteen citations issued within the last three years. The most recent, um in two thousand and twenty five, we've had three. Um in two thousand and twenty four, there has been nine. In two thousand and twenty three, there was two. Um in in two thousand and twenty four, we still have seven that have been unpaid and one also unpaid in two thousand and twenty three. Um so I bring that information just to kind of move forward with the process of having those unpaid violations. How are these things continuing to move forward? If they've. They still have unpaid tickets from prior years.
Yeah.
Um so I just wanted to make sure to share that. Right now, it's seventeen hundred that's still owed to the city out of the three thousand within the last three years.
That was my next question. Thank you, Ms. RC. Uh okay, anything else, Ms. RC? No, thank you, very kind. Uh Commissioner Carlton?
Uh I apologize, I had an urgent matter come up here that I needed to leave the meeting for, but. I would just would say that we don't issue any permits um to entities that owe fines to the city. So we check uh first or we go, I believe it's the collector's office, I can't remember, I believe it's collectors. That we go to, we find out whether or not we know whether or not this business um is, has unpaid fines. If they do, even if they're in a building with a bus, uh an owner. Who unhas unpaid fines, they cannot get their food permits or uh any other permits from us. I just wanted to put that, I just heard the end of that, but I just wanted to make sure you knew that we are not issuing permits to individuals who owe money to the city.
Right, uh Commissioner Carlton, I'm gonna give the floor to uh in a second to Councilor Allen, but if I may, as a follower, Commissioner. Uh the common vic license, which was discussed about, is that under your uh purview, ma'am?
Which one? I'm sorry, Counselor.
Oh, the common vic.
Common vic is not under my purview, no. Um it's.
On the whole?
The, I I thought common vic was under licensing. Someone can um help me with that, but I both thought it was under licensing.
Okay, because my 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 first uh uh my first thought, and I'm just sharing this with the group, is that. Uh and I appreciate you saying that, Commissioner, that you guys checked to see if there's any money outstanding, they don't get like, a license. So the obvious question to me is, I would like to think that's a policy all throughout throughout the city. And so how is it possible then that this particular store, Dollar Tree, has, according to what Ms. RC just told us. They have seven ticket, unpaid tickets in twenty twenty four, yet they still got the license, because I think that's yearly, right?
I don't know that it's annual, Counselor. I know that that the liquor licenses are annual, but that's again because the state requires that. I don't know the same for common vic. That's kind of one of the things I'm referring to when I say I need to look at it, because I don't, I don't know that it's annual. You know, I, that board, I think, uh commi- Commissioner's right, I think the license board probably is the right one for jurisdiction for granting that particular one. But whether they have annually renew, I I don't know. I don't, I don't, the license board works, so I can't tell you off the top of my head.
And I'm just thinking outside of the box, and assuming that it's not, that it's not yearly. I wonder if that's something that we could put in the special uh legislation, home rule, to close the loophole. You know, it's something that I'll be open to 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 discuss, to be honest with you, uh because we gotta close the loophole for sure. Uh Counselor Allen, I believe you.
Yeah, well, to you, to that point, I agree with you, we need to do something, you know, special legislation. Or could we check with the license commission? Maybe you could do that, Counselor Moore, and um and see if we can include. This under there, you know, what would it take for us to include? If they have procedures for taking care of a situation like this, the renewal, the annual renewal and whatever, could we include? Entities like Dollar Tree in that?
Yeah, that's, you're thinking the right thing. That's, I made some notes, that's sort of what I was writing down, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna look and see exactly what they've been dealing with and, you know, we have lots of records. So I'll I'll find out exactly where those go, and if there's a problem with a common vic, where it goes. I I'll figure that out. The questions I have on my list, you're thinking the right things, Counselor, so I will get some answers for you guys. I will have all of them by for the next week.
All right, thank you, thank you. Uh so I'm gonna um, I'm gonna schedule a follow up with this, uh of course, in a couple of weeks. I think we need to continue to talk about all this. Uh uh what I'm thinking right now, so I'm gonna schedule a meeting in about two weeks, uh attorney?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think uh that will work for me for sure. Let me just look my schedule. Uh yeah, so the week of the fourteenth, you're thinking fourteenth to eighteenth would be your two week.
Uh yeah, somewhere on there, yeah.
All right, that's great. Yeah, if you want to do one that week, I'll have answers by then for sure. That's very doable, because I'm around all, I'm working all next week, so I can make, I can make that one.
So I want to be like, I saw you made it, I don't know here, um. Seventeen eighteen. All right, a quick time check, it is now one fifty five, uh Counselor.
Can I, can I ask just one more question? Uh this is for code enforcement. Um and, you know, since you guys are out there on the front lines trying to um. Clean these things up, is there, and and it's also for for uh Mr. Moore as well. They they have unpaid tickets, yet we continue to allow them to do business. Is there? Is there, Tom, maybe this would go as something that that could we put in a rule that if you have an unpaid ticket, you can't do business? You know, or something along the lines of that, because it's not, it's not acting as a deterrent. You know, or something along the lines of that. Because it's not, it's not acting as a deterrent uh the way it's working and some of these are.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to, I, 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 one, one of the things I wanna look at is the terms of the licenses when they're given and what they say. You know, it's gonna be important and then we'll take a look in the past, you know, if there's gonna be surely there'll be violations, you know, of license terms at some level. So I'll try to see what those were and how we dealt with them, you know. And if I, if we don't find any of that, those, then, you know, we'll sort of be building from the ground up, maybe a procedure for that board to do that. And then, um, you know, there's some considerations we'll have to have for that, but that's maybe a little bit down the road.
Right.
I'll get to the, we'll get to those if we have to. Um, but you know, we, we would have to look exactly where our, the limit of what our authority would be to, to add kind of extra teeth to
Right.
And say that, you know, you're prevented from getting certain things. Again, a lot of when we do that is prescribed directly through state statute. So we're just sort of saying, all right, the legislature's saying that's okay and we're gonna adopt that. Um, but that's, like I said, that's a little bit further down the road. The first threshold stuff may answer all of our questions and we may well have a, a vehicle already available.
Very well. Thank you.
Right.
All right, uh, any other questions, comments, ideas? Um, no. Uh, so we also have the press, we have a, a North East Public Radio here with us. Yeah, any questions for the press? No question, okay. Very well. Well, with that being said, I will schedule another meeting for the week of July fourteenth. They're about to follow up on this particular issue. Uh, I'm going to look forward to see how we can close this loophole because uh, you know, we all value our city, we all value our quality of life, uh, and it's just not acceptable. And in that particular corner, if we are not careful, we could lose it. Uh, we could lose it for good. Also, I wanted to thank you to quarter force, because I know you guys out there is doing the thing. Uh, and uh, please, please stay in top of them because we are not going to be hijacked. Uh, by this, there's just no way, just absolutely no way that's gonna happen. With that being said, uh, tomorrow is July fourth. Uh, happy Fourth of July to everybody. If you're gonna be traveling, like I said, seven million people are gonna be traveling today, over the weekend throughout the country. Uh, enjoy it, please be safe and don't forget, we're gonna have a spectacular firework display at the riverfront, starting at, uh, doors opening at seven o'clock at the riverfront. But they will be going off promptly at nine o'clock as well at the riverfront. With that being said, the time is now two oh one. Um, the meeting is adjourned. Happy Fourth of July, everyone.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. Happy Fourth.